Okay, one, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, we got everybody except Jim, right?
Yeah, Jim's running late. He'll be here.
Okay. All right. So call to order the special meeting for Tuesday, April 20th. We could all recite the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so the agenda is roll call. Let's do a roll call first, please.
Jim Batson. Don Carmichael.
Here.
Pat Rudy.
Here.
Lisa Hessel.
Here.
Kevin Huber.
Here.
Karen Lundstedt.
Here.
Casey Rooney.
Here.
Pat Rudy, President.
Okay, so we know that everybody is here except Jim. We do anticipate Jim will be joining us later. Okay, so Janet, tonight, we'll open it for public comment, but I understand there is none. We will review and approve the bid award for the LHS Fieldhouse renovation project. Review and approve the bid award for the LHS Fieldhouse gym type equipment. We will review and approve the bid award for the LHS 2021 Summer HVAC upgrades. Then we will convene an executive session. Topic tonight is employment of an employee, five ILCS 120 slash 2C1. When we return to open session, we will take action this evening. All right. With that said, again, no open, no open public comment, right?
Correct.
We'll move on to the Fieldhouse renovation project bid approval.
Dan and Mark, turn it over to Dan and Mark.
Yeah, so we received the bids and I'm going to, I'm going to share my screen and kind of show you. Sorry, let me zoom in a little bit. Just checking, can everyone see this Google sheet here?
Yep.
Yeah, is, do I need to zoom in a little bit more? Maybe is that better?
Zoomed in is always better for me.
All right, I'm sorry, when I share the screen, all your faces go away, so. So we received, we received the bids and we have an update, so we'll go over the, the, the request to approve. And we've also got Mike Henderson from SDR and we've got Phil and Tom from Gilbane here to, you know, be able to answer any questions that we have as they've been very busy with this process over the last few months. So essentially what I have here on this tab is the results of our bids. There are, I'm just going to highlight, make it a little bit easier to see. There are four numbers here on the trades total that are still technically unknowns right now. The biggest one is going to be the demolition bid, so that bid we had come in that we're going to discuss. I'll let Mark explain that in a second, but we're going to reject that bid and rebid. We only got one bid for that and it was a lot higher than we anticipated. And so they worked on a few things and looking to rebid that. But kind of plugging in all the other numbers from all the other trades that we have, plugging in some assumptions for final cleaning that we typically have, but we won't, you know, that's usually not till a little bit later. And then dumpsters and toilets is always been just kind of an estimate number and you kind of, you pay them as you incur them. The other one is a sound system we have in here. So one of the things realized in design and kind of putting everything together is that we, we're, we don't really have the scope yet finalized or really clarified, I think, yet for the sound system. So we know we're going to have a pretty substantial expense there. And so we're making a provision there. And so all those are kind of added into the trade. So those are details there and then, yeah, I think that's really enough to show you there because then really all this feeds into this really subtotal, which is just the subtotal of the previous page. So our trades total cost of $5 million, Gilbane's costs of $650,000 gives a base cost of $5.7 million. Gilbane has told us they feel comfortable with the $310,000 construction contingency. That's intended to cover unexpected or what, what's the term, Mark? I'm forgetting the term.
Unforeseen conditions.
Unforeseen.
Unforeseen conditions. Thank you. Thanks, Mike and Mark. Unforeseen conditions and you know, anytime you kind of go through a project, you're going to have some design conflicts. They're going to have to get worked out. So it really meant to kind of cover those things plus potentially owner changes. Every project I've been a part of, the owner has decided to change something and the owner's us. So we've usually decided to change something in some project. So that goes to a total construction cost of $6 million. Design costs for STR is at 7%. And then owners' costs, Mark and I went through in this detail of putting together the owners' costs of equipment we think we need. There's, there's other costs that we have to account for. Surveys, geotech, we're going to have some technology, we think, moving and storage. We've got a lot of equipment that we're going to have to move out and store. We're going to have to get some testing and inspections done. And then we have just kind of another contingency built in there. Again, we've really utilized that largely in other projects. And so we feel comfortable having another contingency there. So really kind of rounding out our owners' cost estimate at this point of $300,000. So all of that brings us to a total cost that we're projecting of $6.7 million for the project. Now, that, that, that is based on the demo still coming in at around 500. So we're going to rebid. We don't know how many bids we will get. If it's more than 500,000, that will have a direct impact on the total cost of this project. If it's less, it probably won't be less. It'll have a, it'll also have a direct impact. So that's with that assumption of what's the demo bid going to be. One thing to note, so that's obviously different than the estimate that we had even just, you know, a month and a half ago based on design, but when kind of comparing the numbers, really the biggest difference that stands out is the contingency. You know, back when this was estimated with Gilbane, there was kind of a larger contingency because the design, I would say, would just, you know, you're at an earlier stage of design and you get more specific, more specific. And so that, that helps clarify. So really what this ends up showing me is a lot of the trades ended up kind of similar to what they're estimating. Again, with that caveat of we're going to see what happens with the demo trade. And then after that, really, design costs are directly impacted by that. I had a kind of a, I had a 7.5% on design costs and I think Mike and Mark clarified for me it's 7% for this. We paid different rates depending on somewhat different projects, smaller projects usually are the higher percentage. And then owners' costs, we had a larger number in there for some equipment and we didn't really kind of know what to expect. So that's really the difference. And if you, if we go back all the way to the first time we estimated this with STR back in November, 7.3 million was the number there and that was with a lot of contingencies and unknowns and all kinds of stuff there. So, so yeah, this is good from the sense that it's less than we thought it was going to be. It's a little bit more less than I thought it was going to be. I was kind of hoping for something closer to seven, but again, we don't know what's going to happen with that demo trade. But that roughly is the overall cost. So maybe I'll pause there and any questions and comments on the overall cost before I get into what is up for your approval tonight?
Yeah, Kevin, I got, I got just two questions. First one is easy. Second one's probably easier. So the, yeah, the easy one is Mike, on the design, 7% seems to be where we pay regardless if it's like a pool or maybe, maybe we paid 8%, but I don't remember, maybe it's smaller. What exactly are we designing here? Because I think we're just putting a roof on and then the guts. So I'm trying to figure out why, why there's a 7% design fee. So help me understand that. And then the second question, Dan, is can, you tell me why it's 500K to this? Well, I guess it was more based upon the first bid, right? But what exactly are we demolishing that's going to cost that much? Because I just, I just can't see it. I mean, so those are the two.
Yeah, I'll, I'll turn it to Mike for that first question. The second one, I turn to anybody else on the design team. So go for it.
Sure. So the, the set of construction documents on this must be about 50 or 60 pages of detail. It sounds, at some point it sounds simple, but there's entirely new mechanical systems. There's floor slabs, there's sprinkler systems, fire alarm systems, electrical, you know, window systems. There's a lot of, lot of detail. In order to make it kind of look simple, a lot of stuff just has to be, you have to go in and verify it. All the new gym equipment, the coordination of, since it's very short, the space is, we needed to maintain a certain height. So designing the ductwork and the, and the, the gym equipment so that we can maintain a, you know, the required height going throughout. So it's, it's quite detailed. And I think if, if you'd like, I can show you or I can send you a set of the construction drawings and that, that kind of shows kind of the real scope of what's going on as well as the specification manuals. And of course, the construction administration is, is the, you know, is, is quite lengthy. We're out there quite a bit to make sure that the project's going, going well. And, you know, that it's, it's being built per the construction documents.
Mark Copman, B and G.
One point I might want to add to that, the engineering that was involved with the structure, with the existing structure and making sure our weights and everything for the roof and having the engineers check all the steel and, and making sure whatever we put together, all those calculations, that all, a lot of time was invested in that to make sure, you know, we weren't overweighting the structure, the existing structure that's there to ensure, you know, to ensure we're, our placement of our HVAC equipment, where it goes, where you can't put it up at the top of the roof, which is ideal, you know, at the peak and distribute. You know, we had to put it down towards the bottom and so. Quite a few, quite a few engineering things.
In many ways, it's, was even more complex than building, the building from scratch. Because we have to verify what's, what the thing is, how it's actually made, what we're going to be saving of it. I mean, we stripped down, we're stripping the building down all the way to its girders and then reconstructing it. It's going to look largely like it is now, but it's, it's essentially what we're, what we're saving is the foundation and the structural and the main structural steel. Almost everything else in there is new, including the floor slab.
Mark, just, just, just to give an example, Mark, I was wondering if you or Mike could talk about the idea of working with existing stuff. There was something about, you were concerned about something in the floor and whether there was some type of cabling or something that would be there that was a kind of a big concern in terms of design and like how much that would impact our project?
Sure. Did you want to handle that, Mark?
You can handle it, Mike, if you like, and explain the type of structure it is.
Yes, because this is, the original building was a prefabricated building, sometimes known as a Butler building. The, the, the basic part of the structure is, it's, it's bent. It has these, these triangular pieces of steel and, and it's, it's highly efficient, which is why it's less, the original was less expensive, the pre-engineered building. But the, the nature of them, some of these systems, it has cables that run underneath the, the slab that keep it from pushing out. Again, the, the technical word is a moment frame. And the original documents that we were able to locate showed these cables underneath the slab. And we were very concerned to be able to maintain the, the cables. Essentially, it's a tie rod, but it's underneath a slab. So there's a couple of ways they do it. If the tie rods aren't there, they usually over, overdesign the foundations so that it kind of creates a buttress. So with Gilbane's help, we did some undercover, specific area of demolition to try to uncover those. It was found that they, they went with the enhanced foundation instead of the tie rods. So the tie rods were, were, in spite of what the original drawing, the original construction documents had, it was actually designed, it was actually built differently than it was designed. So, so a lot of verification like that has to go into it to make sure that when we take the slab out, that the building remains intact and braced. And so, you know, there, there are dozens of examples like that through the project. It's, you know, it's kind of, kind of what we, what we do, but there's, there is a lot of thinking, a lot of planning, a lot of due diligence that goes into it.
No, I think I appreciate that. You always, I always have to ask you this one, a big one, the big ones, and you know that. I guess the, the one question I may still, I just want to make sure we clarify. The, the design starts when we're way a long time ago. We're not paying you anything extra from all the work you did, helping us get the specs and doing all the work you just kind of did. That's in this fee. There's never been, we've never cut you checks for 50 grand for this or 70 grand for that. That's in this design fee, right?
So.
Does that make sense?
I believe so. There, years ago, there could have been some different planning.
No, 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 no. I'm, I'm, no, no, I'm talking on this project when we said, hey, we're going to do this. Hey, Mike, we need help. You came out, you started doing stuff well before. Because a lot of people think design, it's just doing some drawings, you know, and, and things like that. You've already specified, no, it's the work before, it's the work during bidding, it's the work while we will do the drawings. And then I, I want to do a little follow-up with you here in terms of it's the work even monitoring while they're doing stuff. Can you just briefly let us know the work you do that's different than Gilbane? Because again, just common sense would say, well, why do you need two people out there watching what the trades people are doing? Aren't we paying, you know what I mean? So just kind of explain that too.
Oh, sure. So what, so the, so our, our work on the site is to make sure that the, that, that the documents are being followed, that you're, that, that our clients are getting what was designed. So from both product standpoint, so if, let's say if we, you know, we, we specified a mondo floor that of a certain type, so we make sure that that product goes, goes down. The metal panels are of a certain gauge, certain width, a certain quality, certain insulation value. That so, so, so Gilbane will coordinate the contractors to give us the information about the products that are going into the building and the method of it being installed. We check it and, and at, at that point, they, their, Gilbane's role is to coordinate the contractors to schedule the, the installations of it all. And then we see it going up and we can catch, if something's not quite right, we can catch things early on. And of course, at the end, we check to make sure that everything was built according to those documents and according to, so what the district had, had specified to be bid. So, so, so for us, it starts at the beginning of finding out what it is that you want and coordinating the mechanical systems and everything, specifying it. You know, Gilbane coordinates, you know, the contractors and actually the execution. We look along the way and then we check it towards the end and then there's a punch list and a closeout section at the end of a project. So we, we call the, the different phases schematic design. That's the early stuff when it's sketches and ideas. Design development, which takes those ideas a little bit further. Then we get into construction documents and that's with the blueprints. Those are the construction, the, the instructions for the contractors to build it from, both written and drawn. The bid phase and then the final is construction administration phase. So each one of those phases is encompasses our full scope of work, which is what's inside that 7%.
Yep, nope, that's great. I, I appreciate that one. I'm going to have a follow-up for Dan. So Dan, thank you, thank you. Appreciate that.
You're very welcome.
Daniel Stanley Business. Daniel Stanley Business.
Kevin, can you remind me of the second question?
Uh, yeah, how, how come we have to pay 500 grand to destroy something? Seems like a lot. But the other bid came in well, I mean significantly higher, so.
Yeah, maybe, yeah, I might turn to Mark and maybe Gilbane can talk about that.
Yeah, so.
Mark Copman, B and G.
With Phil's help, we can explain what's entailed in, in a demolition. Phil worked hard on, as we looked at ways to save money on the project, Phil worked hard as to, in his construction sequencing for the project and doing the things that we originally thought, go in, do the floor first and then, then start the demo, you know, so we could start early. Phil actually changed things around and put different trades in charge of different things. So like demo of the roof has been given to the demo contractor or roofing contractor would normally do it. But in order to sequence it and have the demo contractor work with the steel guy, you know, Phil can explain, you know, Phil, Phil worked on all that sequencing, which ended up saving us money in the overall cost of the project. So Phil, can you explain a little bit on the extent of, of what the, the demo is on the project?
Daniel Stanley Business.
You know, I don't, I don't see Phil's audio turned on, so I'm not sure if he can't access audio. If not, maybe Tom, if, can maybe speak to that?
Sure. You know, basically what this is, is a select demo project. It's not something that you would just go in with a wrecker or, you know, a big backhoe and just knock it down. It's got to be done selectively so that, as Mike was talking about, the steel frame is pretty much going to stay intact. We've got some purlins to come off, but then the, the roof comes off in its entirety of the deck. The floor has to be chipped out, taken out, removed. So these guys are really doing, you know, careful demolition. We've got driver's ed, we've got ceilings, you know, in some of the other areas of the building. Excuse me, with weight training and, you know, some refreshes in there too. So it, it's really much more labor intensive because they got to be careful just what, with what they're doing with their scope of work in the demolition.
The, the big thing to be careful that, with is keeping the frame intact. So Phil's got it worked out, so we're taking our roof sections off at a time and coordinating the steel people to weld the new purlins back in to hold the frame in place. So it's not like we're ripping off the whole roof and letting everything sink. We have to move along strategically to keep, you know, to keep our steel structure that we're keep saving, keep it in place and secure it. So the building doesn't start swaying or, or moving and cause any other issues.
Now, that makes sense. The original bids, I'm sorry, did the original bids go out with that plan in mind?
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
So do we anticipate that there's going to be a difference when we rebid this?
Phil, you're there. There was, there was, there was a.
Mark Copman, B and G.
Gilbane supplied us, you got an attachment, you know, recommendation for us to rebid. So after vetting with the, the one bidding contractor, the one contractor that bid, it was realized that there was, the definition of scope and everything was need to be redefined and clarified in, in order to pull this together and, and actually get, get bids that should be, you know, a lot closer to what the, the estimate, the estimate was. Gilbane actually, you know, when we saw that bid, they put their, their team together and looked over the project again. Same day that they were vetting, you know, with the demo contractor and looked through everything to make, to ensure that, you know, their, the cost that they had estimated for the demo was actually correct. And that, you know, there weren't any mistakes on our end as to, you know, justify a higher cost. So, you know, they, they reestimated, looked through all their paperwork and everything. And that's when they came back and said, Mark, you know, we're way off here, you know. And so we talked about it and, you know, suggested that, you know, let's rebid this one section. Our other bids are, are, are within, you know, around our estimate. So, you know, that was a decision to move forward.
And Mark, I think as, as you and I had that initial conversation, I think you also indicated that there were a couple of other bidders that were interested in the project, but they had larger bids out with other contractors and they weren't sure they would have the personnel or the equipment to be able to do our job if they've got those larger jobs. So, which makes, you know, perfect sense. But I think what Gilbane has been able to validate is that's not a million dollar project. I mean, that bid came in at well over a million dollars. And if that's the case and we can get those kind of bids of demolition, then I think we need to start our own demolition company. Because that's crazy, right? Two, 2.1 or 2.2 times higher than the job is. So that's why we ended up bidding it out again and see where the numbers come in because those numbers are ridiculous and obviously we would never recommend that to you, so.
Yeah. So with the sequence what we did when we discussed that, so Gilbane, we went ahead and got it in the paper last Friday. The rebid notice, we have 10 days before we can open a bid. So that went in on the paper on the, the 15th, I believe it was. So putting us 10 days is the 26th. So the morning of the 26th, where our board meetings that evening, we'll be opening those, those bids that morning and then vetting with the lowest bidder to ensure that they've got everything included in their bid as per the bid specs and then bring a recommendation for that demo package Monday evening on the 26th.
Pat Rudy, President.
And just, yeah, just one que, just one question. What is the owner's QA?
Pat Rudy, President.
In, in spec, I'm guessing he's talking about.
Owner's rep QA for 50,000.
That's a quality assurance, an additional thing that we have done on all our projects. We did it with the pool, you know, for instance, on the pool, inspections of our vapor barriers, inspections of the roofing system, additional inspections to ensure over and above what is normally scoped out with the architect. So we, we do additional, additional quality assurance takes place as part of our projects.
Who's we, Mark? Who actually physically does that work?
That, that is Inspec, our building envelope consultant.
Okay.
So they do our masonry, roofing, those type of things for us, so.
Kevin Huber, School Board.
All right, so, and Dan, you might kick this one off to Gilbane. Can, it looks like it's about, somebody explain the difference between CM services personnel, that's 334K and then CMC, 147K. So that's 500, about 500K worth of, I'll just call it salaries for a project that starts in, let's say, May. And hopefully, fingers crossed, gets done September-ish. So can you tell like the number of people out there and what's in that 500 grand? Because again, that's, that's, that's quite a bit, quite a bit of money. And so I think we probably need, I, at least I need to understand what, what exactly is in there in those two line items.
Daniel Stanley Business.
Yeah, I'm going to actually pass that off to Carol. Carol, I think you can, you want to?
Daniel Stanley Business.
Just kidding. Um, yeah, I'd, I'd say Gilbane, Phil or Tom, I don't, maybe I lost Tom, but.
Am I coming through now?
Yeah, I hear you. We see you and hear you, Phil, go ahead.
Okay, I just want to make sure. We're going to have two full-time people in the field, myself and the superintendent. We'll have a quality manager, a safety manager, our purchasing department here. Is it coming through clear, Dan?
Oh, we lost it, Phil.
I, I can hear you. I can hear you now.
I can't.
Not anymore, I'm sorry.
But it basically, you know, our services started, oh, going back to Jeff Masters and the estimating guys at the beginning of this year, putting estimates together. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. But Tom, I assume that's in the pre-construction though, right? Because I see this broken down 54K for pre-construction. So I'm assuming that's probably what that stuff would be. that's probably what that stuff would be. So I'm talking really the 334 personnel, which I think Phil was getting to maybe a couple of people and then the CMC of 147.
Right. Yeah. As Phil was saying, it's, it's himself. It's a full-time superintendent, full-time Phil. Safety director that comes out inventories, the project is, uh, as we build it, quality will come out and inspect the, the work in the field, but then also our documents. You know, our contracts, make sure that everything is being submitted, issued per plans and specs legally to make sure that we've got all the contracts covered, all the insurances in place. So we take, uh, we've got our people that look at that. They're not full-time, but we've got people that go through and make sure that all of that stuff is being done and inventory that. And then we've got, I, I think you mentioned, yeah, the work will start end of May and then that'll run through. Hopefully we're just running through mid-September, um, third week of September. And then we've got close out, we've got the, the punch list, we've got you know, supervision on that turnover of all the documents, the as-built drawings, any attic stock that we owe you guys. And then close out of the contracts. And while Phil's there, any change order negotiations, any of that, that has to take place during the project that may, you know, require additional or not additional, but might require us to look at any work that we're going to do, any owner changes or whatever beyond the initial scope.
All the pay requests, all the accounting personnel. If I'm coming through, okay. We've got a lot of support. There's probably 10 people supporting the project internally on Gilbane's side. In addition to Tom's time, my time in the superintendent.
Pat Grudy President.
So just to ask that question a little differently, I mean, how do you guys build up to that number? I mean,
Pat Grudy President.
What's, what's, what's the process? Is there some, you know, average labor rate used for all those different people, time, some number of hours you think they're going to?
Everyone is scheduled with their weekly hours with their base rate. We have an enormous spreadsheet that generates that and it is literally accounts for every person at their own rate.
Okay. So it's, it's kind of a zero-based buildup based on how many hours you think each different function is going to spend on the project, right?
Right. We've got looking at the drawings, you know, initially too, it's called IDC where they review and try and help catch conflicts in the drawings early on to prevent change orders. Those guys spent about 50 hours on a project. There's a lot you don't see in the field.
Sure.
Don Carmichael School Board.
And I think Jeff did, and, and Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, but I know that you guys did get the initial breakdown to kind of go along with what Pat is asking. It showed that proposal with the number of hours by the position for the labor that we had built up. I think it showed durations, man hours, that kind of thing.
Mark Copman B and G.
Uh, he might've shared that document with Dan and I, trying to remember back, you know, you know.
I, I don't remember seeing that. I remember seeing the breakdown of the 650. That's what I've, that's what I have. Um, but beyond that, I don't, I don't know that I, I've seen that.
Yeah. The difference, the difference here's that, uh, Mike, you can help me out here or, or Tom. Instead of having a general contractor uh, doing the project, um, they would be doing all the documents. They would be, we would have to have Dan and I would be handling the change orders, the scope, all that financial paperwork. Uh, on our part. So Gilbane's working for us. We're a construction manager, you know, as a construction manager, we're a general contractor. Um, is working for profit and, you know, then dealing more with the architect and with us. Uh, on the accounting wise, it's a lot more um, for the district. District staff to do it. And plus, you know, Gilbane's working on our behalf. We're, you know, a general contractor is working on their own behalf for profit margin.
Just a reminder, we did not, no offense to Gilbane, we did not start this process assuming Gilbane was going to be part of it. This was really as I think, you know, STR and Mark got further in kind of designing this and kind of realizing the schedule constraints particularly, um, that the CM services were going to be valuable for this project. Um, so I don't know if you guys remember that, but, but there was a time when we, we didn't really know that Gilbane was going to be involved. And then, then there was the advice that this would be, this would be something that is worth it due to the nature of the project and the sequencing and also the pretty tight schedule that we've been on. You know, since, since we decided to move forward with this.
Yeah, no, I, I think, I think they have tremendous value. Here's, here's the concern or the question I have. So typically CM and you even have the number there, CM's at like 10%, right? So we started a bid, we thought it was going to be 5 million, 10% is 500 grand. Great. That sounds good. We're paying 500 grand. They can do that. Then, you know, the bids started going way up and things way down. But if the 10%, we have a $5 million bid and should be usually, I think it's usually about 10%. I don't know, maybe less. I don't know, but you have 10% there. And but we don't like the 10%, so we're gonna go ahead and now it's going to be 10% plus another 150K, right? And, and so I'm just trying to figure out, and I think I appreciate Tom telling me that the personnel line item is there's no, no profit, anything built into that, it sounds like. That's just hours, base rate, number. So that's, I, that helped a lot, right? And then I saw the 147, I'm, and obviously every company needs to make their profit and that's fine too. I just want to make sure there wasn't two profit layers there. I, meaning I'm not paying 500 bucks an hour for a construction manager. And then I'm also getting charged 147,000 for profit. And that, that's where, kind of where I'm going. And I, I need that, I guess I need that representation from you guys to make sure. Again, I hope you understand, I'm not trying to pick on you. I, you have that value for sure, but by looking at that. I go, wait a minute, 500K worth of personnel, that should be the total CM cost on a $5 million project, the 10%. And I'm already paying, uh, STR 7%. So now I got 17% into this project on just admin, not even construction, not even trades. And so I, I just have to kind of keep pushing back just to make sure I understand it before I go for a vote.
Yeah, it's, it's actually almost 20%. I mean, Kevin, if I hear you correctly, your account, your question is the estimate was for construction management of 10%. It's now running almost 13%.
Pat Grudy President.
Right?
Daniel Stanley Business.
So just to be clear, so the 10%, um, so that, that was based on STR's estimate when we did that back in November, but since then it's not been, it's not been built on an automatic percent. So I, I know I have the label in there. That was just incorrect. I never really thought to, I never thought about that label beyond November. I just pasted, pasted the titles there. But really since March and even April, um, it, it's not been based on that, it's not been based on 10%. That was really based on an estimate at our November estimate.
Yeah, no, Dan, I think that's cool for sure. I get the issue. I guess we can always go back though and look at, we built a pool. I thought Gilbane helped us do that. I don't know what percent basically that came out at, but we tried to look at that. They did Vernon Hills for us, I think, yes, they've done Vernon Hills for us. So we can look at what percent, and all I'm asking is, is this percent consistent with those percentages? And if it is, okay, then I just want to make sure I understand how, because I, I actually, I don't like the percentages. I like the way they did it now, build up, zero base, build up. Hey, it's going to cost you 650K. This is, here's your pieces of it. Okay. Well, I might not like it, but I'm probably going to vote for it because at least I, I got, but I got to make sure I understand it. I don't want double profits, things like that. That that's something I just, I don't, I don't like. So.
Yeah, we don't, we don't mark up our, our labor, our multi-purpose taxes, insurance, you know, benefit fringes, uh, base labor rate, the, the fee, the profit that we get is just that one line item that you see there for whatever it is, 147 or something. There's, there's no hidden profit in anything. And it is a lot of other companies do, we're doing pass-throughs on a lot of our general conditions items like trailers. Um, a lot of that computers, that kind of thing is just at cost. Uh, so that is not something that we make a profit on either. And I don't think if there are any changes on this project either, I don't believe we, we mark that up either. I think that's just we're out there and we just, we just do it with Phil and the superintendent.
Don Carmichael School Board.
I'm sorry, Phil, go ahead.
Oh, no. Yeah. No, it's, it's all open book. Uh, we, we get a bill for a change order for 5,000, the district pays 5,000. We don't make any additional money ever. As the CM.
Pat Grudy President.
And the personnel costs, is that a fixed thing? I mean, if it, if it takes you more hours, that's on you or is that, uh, does that flow with what the actuals are?
No, we'll, we'll take the hit if it takes longer.
Okay.
There's no extra charges for, um, even if it pains for three months straight.
Okay. I'm good with it.
We, uh, we jump back to some of the discussion as we were getting into the pool and then repurpose the yellow pool and then do Vernon Hills. Uh, this was a good discussion back then and it's a good discussion tonight, but it was the same discussion. And one of the advantages of having, let's say Gilbane is a CM come in, was they had a fixed profit margin. You know, regardless of how the project went. So that was attractive to us, but we, you recall, we had the same discussion before we jumped into those projects too. And it's a good discussion. I mean, it's a good, it's a good review for sure.
Francis Lee Superintendent.
Okay. Any other questions on that?
Kevin, any other questions? Kevin, did that answer your question?
Yeah, that's good. I, I even think, uh, Phil even said, I, the reimbursables of 33 or 34K is exactly what you said. It's just basically the, the trailer and costs, the copying and cost. I mean, all these things, I assume that's what the reimbursables are. Built in there, there's a, like a 34K line item in there. Eighty-one in insurance, you guys had, what's, is that, what, what is that? That's again, big line item. What insurance am I paying for there?
That's our GL, that's our general liability, you know, our, our auto, um, our pollution. You know, anything that we've got that is required of us to have by, by contract or by statute is just our basic insurance for our guys, for us on the project and then our off-site insurance as well. And that's it. I think on this one, Phil, this was 865,000.
That's correct.
Yeah. The trades carry their own general liability also for them, for their company is required, but um, that is just our, our GL, off-site, auto, pollution liability, that kind of thing.
Which, which is, it was carried in the pool. Uh, we carried it in the pool. We also carried it at Vernon Hills and the other projects at the same, I believe it was the same rate.
Yeah, probably so.
Point eight six five. Yeah.
Yes.
All right, guys. I appreciate. Thanks for indulging me.
Yeah, thanks. I was, I thought that was really helpful.
Good discussion.
All right. Um, so I'm going to share real quick and then show you uh, what we're looking at for approval tonight. So we should be back on this screen. So what we're have for approval tonight are these, these trades that I'm highlighting here. The yellows are the ones that again are the estimates. With the demo, obviously we've talked about, uh, the greens are ones that we've already done. That was when we pre-ordered those materials. Um, so we've already done that. And then the, really the only thing left is this 245 is, that's later in this meeting. That's the HVAC equip or the, uh, the gym equipment. So just wanted to let you know, that's really what's in this RTA is, is all of these bunch of trades. So that's represented uh, excuse me, represented in this document here, the recommend to award. With those bids, the one caveat is this, this additional flooring, um, that based on from Mark and talking to the building, um, that there is a, a higher quality floor that was the alternate 19,260 that I believe we're recommending to include in that. And those are in my numbers, adding this 19,260 in as well. Uh, Mark, do you want to just touch base on that, what that is?
Yeah. So, um, we've been, um, for instance, we purchased a mondo floor for the multipurpose gym, which is a standard two-layer floor. They offered a, they also offer, uh, another product, um, an upgrade on that. It actually has a third layer. Um, so instead of the bottom layer being a solid core, there's actually small dimples. I call it, looks like a waffle built in the bottom. So it's, uh, more shock absorbing. So it's, uh, better for the student athletes and, and the PE kids for running. It's better for basketball, better for volleyball. Uh, so in speaking with the athletic director and showing him the differences in the product. Um, you know, for the, the safety of, um, you know, of the, this, the, the kids. Uh, we're recommending to, you know, upgrade, upgrade the flooring, uh, to the, um, the three-layer instead of the two-layer because of the shock absorption factor.
Daniel Stanley Business.
Okay.
Daniel Stanley Business.
Yep. So that's really, uh, what is up for this first one of, for your approvals. This is the recommend to award. Majority of our bid package.
So it, it's to approve a bid package to Gilbane correctly? Is that correct?
Pat Grudy President.
In the amount of?
Don Carmichael School Board.
Do you, do you do a letter of assignment to us or, because we'll hold the contracts?
Yeah, they hold the contracts. We pay a bill gain, Gilbane, Gilbane pays the trades.
Daniel Stanley Business.
So there actually are bids.
Francis Lee Superintendent.
Dan?
Yeah. I mean, yeah. So I guess is the, are you awarding the contract to Gilbane? Are you awarding it to all the trades essentially?
I just want to make sure we get the motion correct. That's all.
Oh, I think the, the approval, the, the approval is to the, the motion would be to approve the recommendate, the recommendation to award um, as presented, which would award these bids to these contractors uh, based on their, their public bids as the lowest responsible responsive bidders.
Yeah. And it allows Gilbane to issue contracts to the low bidders, you know, in the bid amounts that they submitted.
Francis Lee Superintendent.
Cause that's what the bidding law covers is, is actually the, the individual bids.
Pat, would it be helpful for the purposes of the motion to have the memo that Dan just showed us?
Well, the memo is, is the list of the contractors and the approved bid amounts, correct Dan?
Yeah. And, you know, and for you to, to know the total, so the total there, I mean, I can give you the total. I get the, I see there's no, there's not actually a total number on that piece of paper. Um, but I can give you the total number if that would be easier in making that motion.
Well, we can, why don't we just make the motion as stated in the, um, the Gilbane submission dated, whatever the thing is, it's on my other screen here now.
Daniel Stanley Business.
Um, April 15th. Yeah. So the total, the total, just for you and for the, the record and everything is 3,639,608 dollars, um, is the total amount for those. That includes the alternate um, for the special floor.
3,639,8. Is that what you said?
3,639,608.
Six oh eight. Okay.
And I, I would assume that then at, at the next board meeting, when we have the demo, then we will do a total total project cost, budget.
Yeah, we kind of set that, set that as we go. I mean, really we approve each trade as we go and kind of give you this to know like what the total cost of the project is.
So whatever we, whatever else we approve Monday night, for example, if we, you know, we have bids and we throw the, the demo in. Uh, then you'll approve that bid, but we'll have an updated overall cost for you. And Pat, I think for our purposes tonight, we can award the bids, um, as, uh, presented. And the amount of, and then Dan can give us the amount again.
It's 3,639,608.
Okay.
Yep. So the motion will, will approve, um, the recommendations in the, uh, memo from Gilbane dated April 15th in the amount of 3,639,608 dollars. Right?
Yep. The intention of the motion is to, to be clear about what you're approving and I think it's clear.
Yeah. Okay. Is there a motion?
Go moved. Or do I need to say it all out?
I think it's clear. No, I think it's clear.
Carol should have that.
As long as Carol's clear on it and she can document it correctly. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call please.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Okay, motion carries.
So then the second part of this same agenda item is then, uh, to take formal action to So then, the second part of this same agenda item is then uh, to take formal action to reject um, reject the bid uh, demolition package, demolition bid package O two A, um, and we're going to rebid that.
Alright, is there a motion to reject bid package zero two A?
So moved.
Second, okay, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Our motion carries. Okay. That's it on that, right? Next we're going to gym equipment. Okay, gym, gym equipment. Oh, ju- just back to Mark's point, but in the board meeting then, are we approving the total project amount not to exceed, you know, whatever that latest number is? Is that how we're doing this?
Uh, you can, we've not done that on the other projects. It's really, it's really been, we're approving the bids. And we've really kind of approved the other contracts in the past. Like we have a standing contract with Mike Henderson, we have a standing contract with Gil Bane. Um, and so you, you can do that if you'd like. Um, that's not really what we've been doing.
Yeah, and I'm just trying to get at like when we approved the pool, we approved the, you know, building a pool in a total amount of like twenty-one point five million dollars or whatever it was, right? Which included the contingency amounts and all that kind of stuff. Because what we, if we just approve things just like we did today, that, those amounts don't include contingencies and, and those kinds of things.
Uh, correct. So we can do, I'm just being honest. I don't know that I recall that there was an actual formal action for a total amount. You definitely can do that. Not a bad idea to do that. I'm just, you know, trying to relay. I don't know that that, that that happened.
If I remember correctly, the sequencing was uh, we went ahead, we had our estimates and stuff. We went ahead with a, before we actually did the bidding, we approved the, the project not to exceed twenty-one point five million.
That's what I'm thinking.
And then we moved forward with all our bidding and we put a budget in place first based on our estimates and then we move forward from there.
Yeah, and that's when I first got here, so that could have, I could have missed that.
Yeah, so what, so, so that, and that's what we're missing here. So it's not on the agenda tonight, so we're not going to approve that tonight, right?
Pat, I don't, I don't, I, I think what happened is, I'm not sure we had a formal vote on twenty-one and a half million. I think we had consensus on twenty-one and a half million because between uh, Mike's um, initial work and Gil Bane's uh, estimates and then defining estimates, we knew that that was the number we were going to target. I'm not sure, formally ever set that as the number, not that we couldn't do that.
Let, let's, if we could, without spending uh, weeks of uh, man-time to try to figure it out, let's just double check that before the board meeting. Because if we did do it, I kind of hate to break that precedent at this point. Okay? If we didn't, fine, as long as we're being consistent, I think that's fine.
Okay, and in terms of process, I mean, really up until, really kind of even this morning, no, not this morning, yes. Was it, Mark, when did we meet about this? Was this yesterday or today?
Uh, yesterday.
Yesterday. So yesterday morning is when we kind of knew the six point seven million after kind of looking at all the numbers and talking it through. Um, so what I wouldn't, what I would not have wanted to have you do is approve an eight million dollar project, right? When, you know, before we actually know, based on an estimate, I, I wouldn't have wanted to do that. Um, I want to get you a realistic cost for this project. And this is really the first time that we believe we have a very accurate cost for this project.
So are we locking in on the six, seven? That's our, that's our number? Um, that's what it sounds like to me.
I mean, I think the assumption is based on, I'm just, I'm trying to, I'm trying to say it in a logical sense. The assumptions are the trades coming in as they are and the other costs that we're anticipating. This is a six point seven million dollar project, again, assuming whatever happens with the demolition bid. Uh, but we've, we've gotten real numbers on all, all of those other numbers and there's, you know, there's still other estimates that we have in there, but we think those are, those are realistic numbers. Um, to go for it. So this is not an eight million dollar project. This is closer to six point seven million, you know, depending on that demo trade.
And changed, Dan, as you reminded me today. Couple hundred dollars, so.
Yeah, yeah. I just want us to lock in on a number because that was frankly helpful to us as, as we did the pool. I mean, that was our, that was our guidepost. We weren't going to.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with you. I think it's helpful, you know, we've already had someone reach out asking a question like, hey, you're proving a three point six million dollar project. And I just say, whoop, hold on, it's not three point six million dollar project.
Six point seven.
Yeah, so.
Okay, alright. Again, let's double check the precedent and uh, we'll operate consistent with whatever we did on the pool and the uh, other projects. Okay?
See you guys. I gotta go to another meeting. You're good with, you're good without gym, right?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay.
So that, alright, let's go to the uh, equipment.
So the fieldhouse equipment, this is again associated with the LHS uh, project. This is not a, this was, uh, I guess this wasn't necessarily a bid. This is approval under a purchase contract uh, that was presented at our committee meeting. Um, is that last week, last week, Monday? Uh, so this is not the first time you've seen this. So this is two hundred and forty-five thousand, uh, twenty-seven dollars and two cents to H two I, uh, under the Sourcewell contract. Um, yeah, and we save two hundred thousand dollars if we give them a PO by the end of this month.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the um, H two I group contract in the amount of, let's get back to the final number there, two hundred and forty-seven thousand, twenty-seven dollars and two cents.
Well, actually, if, if we have a PO, Pat, um, uh, or I, I, if we sign the, sign the proposal tomorrow, we will save the two thousand dollars additional discount. So the number would be two hundred and forty-five thousand, twenty-seven dollars and two cents.
Okay. So I stand corrected, two forty-five, oh, twenty-seven, oh, two. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lund, oh, excuse me, Lundstedt's not here. Rooney.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Groody.
Aye. That's it? Okay, motion carries. Alright, one more discussion on HVAC upgrades.
This was also the bid that we talked about at the last meeting. So this was the HVAC uh, um, HVAC project at LHS, different than the LHS Fieldhouse project, um, that came in way under than what we thought. Um, Gil Bane, or not Gil Bane, sorry, uh, STR and um,
CS two.
Thank you, CS two, sorry. Um, vetting this out and um, booking, you know, we don't really have a, a, a bona fide basis to reject Omni, uh, OGNI group uh, for that bid. So um, that still is valid as far as I know, right? Mark, Mike, Mark, Mike?
Yes.
Good. So yep, this is uh, as, as was presented at our committee meeting last week.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the bid um, with OGNI group for Libertyville High School Summer twenty twenty-one HVAC upgrades in the amount of two hundred and sixty thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars?
Eight hundred and eighty-two.
I'm sorry, eight hundred and eighty-two. Thanks, Mark.
Yes, sorry, Pat.
So moved.
No, no, you're, you're correct, Mark. So moves, there a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Sorry, who did the second?
I think uh, Katie, was that you?
Sure, I think did Donna and I speak at the same time, so. Sure, I did the second, second.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Sorry.
Okay, uh, Huber.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Groody.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. Okay, that's it, right? For those? Alright, is there a mo-, okay, thanks you guys. Good job. Is there a motion to convene an executive session, uh, topic tonight, employment of an employee, five I L C S one twenty slash two C one?
I move to convene an executive session.
Second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? It's not, roll call please.
Rooney.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Groody.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. And Brian, I suspect we will leave this link and then uh, come back to this one later. Uh, and then go to the other link for the open session.
Okay.
Okay, see you on the other side.
Good night all.
Night.